Roll call, please.
Mayor T. Walt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell.
Here.
Councilman Gillespie is absent. Councilman Holloway is absent. Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is approve of the minutes, work session minutes of November the 16th and November the 23rd, 2020, regular council meeting minutes of November the 23rd, 2020. Your motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the work session minutes of November 16th and November 23rd and the regular council meeting minutes of November 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing done, motion carried. Take that back. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie is absent, Councilman Holloway is absent, Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item five tonight is received petitions or correspondence from the public. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have two. The first one is David Means. Is Crystal out there?
Do you want me to give you a copy of this?
David, you already know the rules, so I'm not going to go with the rules this evening.
So my name is David Means. I live at 210 West First Street here in Front Royal. I want to thank you to Mayor Gene Tuwalt for your service to the town. Remarkable. Over the years, I've really come to admire your knowledge and your smooth way of dealing with things. It's really great. Jake Meza, I met you when you were on the Planning Commission, and I was so impressed, somebody who could see the budgets, understand them, and be able to ask questions over the years, and really concise. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Bill Seelock, you have also really stepped forward, and I want to thank you for that. It's like a whole new world, and I appreciate your help. Thank you. Lori, I'll figure out that Loom software with your help, but for council, I have a package for you, and it's all based on a set of plans for stream design that deals with current thinking. And it's 25 out of 49 slides, and I'll be a voice on it, not a picture. So I have five questions for you, and it's all dealing with the Happy Creek, because I'm not sure we've actually figured out why are we doing this. And maybe I should go through all five, and you can answer whoever has the best knowledge. What is our evidence of doing the project? And when I say that, I mean like engineering studies, flood history, possibly even projected stream side development that's going to occur, and we do know that that will happen, part of overall plan for the Happy Creek watershed, since that's a focal point. What is the budget for the project? Because originally, I thought it was 34,000, 38,000, and after figuring out what stone might cost, it's going to be over 100,000 for sure in just materials. Where is the money coming from? And whose idea? Which I guess coincides with why are we doing this? So I guess that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Next speaker.
This means, before you leave, the last time we couldn't get your PowerPoint presentation up, could you email that to Tina so we can share it with council?
Yes. That's what I was just talking about. Lori has this really great educational program for her school, and she was able to share it with me, but there's always that one thing that you don't figure out in the program, and then you can't do anything.
So if there's any way we can help you, Todd or I personally.
Yes, you'll really appreciate the document because it's so well done. Yeah, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Welcome to the new town manager. I hope you have come here for the people, to give them a hand and to be honest with them and to work together. On Friday, I sent each council member an email requesting information.
Keep your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley View Drive. To each council member an email requesting information concerning the extension on the Happy Creek project. That was on Friday. On Saturday, 24 hours later, I had received no responses, so I sent a reply saying only "no response" with a question mark to each member. On Sunday, 48 hours later, I received two responses. One response said my comment of "no response" with a question mark was antagonistic tone. I've had no other responses. That to me is being antagonistic way beyond a "no reply" with a question mark. Six council members are responsible for all government oversight. In other words, the buck stops with you. Concerning Happy Creek, all we have heard is excuses and falsehoods. We heard the excuse, "I did not know the complexities of environmental impact," and so on and so on. We should have been informed of all of this by the town attorney, a couple members said. We heard the interim town manager and a council member say when it was found out that the contractor who cut the trees down by mistake was fired the next day. He was no more than a scapegoat. The statement by the town employee overseeing this project saying all the trees that were cut down were cut down so the riprap could be installed. All of the trees on the banks were cut down for the riprap. All six of you knew the trees were being cut down and did nothing until there was a public outcry. It did not matter to you, this was being done. Excuses and falsehood, but like I said, the buck stops with you. You are responsible for the damage done. The interim town manager collects his final paycheck and is told a job well done. This council pushes blame onto someone else every time and protects themselves and other town employees where the blame should be pointed to. I may be antagonistic according to a town member, council member, but I do face up and take the blame if I make a mistake. I do apologize for that mistake, but taking the blame and apologizing for it has never been done by this council. Like I said, the buck stops with you. Stop making excuses and falsehoods to the people for your giant environmental mistake and just say we made a mistake. I apologize. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, it's been wonderful having you mayor. I hope you well in your retirement. Have fun, and to everybody, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Could I just say something? I don't know if this is appropriate or not, so I just wanted to clarify. So I did respond to your email?
Yes, you did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
You were one of the two.
Right, I understand, but I'm saying, in my response, I said that I'd asked for clarification and that I was hoping we would get something for this evening. I just wanted to make sure that.
That's fine.
It started to worry me that maybe you hadn't received it because I didn't send it.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm glad you brought it up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No, sir.
No one else. All right. Next item tonight is reports, reports of the town manager, Stephen Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I have a few items I just want to touch base on with the increase in COVID-19 cases. Thank you. With the increase in COVID-19 cases, today we had our staff meeting, and we were talking about potential plans to kind of look at how our operation is to minimize even more potential concerns with employees and citizens. So we'll be rolling out probably tomorrow some measures to kind of minimize the exposure, and I just wanted to give you all heads up as we work through this. The other thing with the inclement weather come Wednesday, they're predicting some models say four inches, some say 18 inches. With that said, our Public Works Department, as well as our other operations staff, are ready for the event. Let's hope it's not that bad. Also want to take the time to thank staff and the department heads. Last week, I took a tour of all the departments and their facilities. Matt helped coordinate that, as well as Tina, and it was really a good opportunity for me to not only learn about Front Royal and the operations, but to get to know our staff, and I would have to say, we do have some great staff. And more importantly, starting next week and part of this week, I will be going out and actually meeting more employees. So I look forward to that, but I just wanted to share that with council. And then finally, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and hope everyone enjoys their Christmas. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Next item tonight is request, requests or inquiries of council people.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just was hoping that we could get an update on the, what Mr. Gabbard was referring to and others about in the extension for Happy Creek project, if or when we have, if we've asked for it or not. So I'm not sure if we want to.
Yeah. Ms. Cockrell, Mr. Hicks was down at the PD, so you probably hadn't even seen this email. At 5:37 this evening, we received an email from Mr. Huffman, who is the representative from CHA, and the long and the short of it is, there's a couple ways, I haven't even thoroughly read the email, to be candid. There's a couple ways that we can go about a potential extension. So I think tomorrow, we're going to have a call with him and get a better understanding of exactly what this means. There appears to still be some confusion with the MRC and Mr. Huffman, exactly what needs to be presented. If in fact, we plan to put any larger rocks, here's what it says, and I'll just quote it. The BMRC permit addresses actions and work that occurs below ordinary high water, and any work that occurs above that level is under jurisdiction of the Core and Warren County through land disturbance permit. The joint permit application of JPA did not include the use of larger rocks, and that any variation from the JPA will require the submittal of a new JPA that includes a plan for the proposed use of these larger rocks. This will then be submitted to the various review agencies for review and comment, public notice, permit, and processing. So again, I haven't even, we haven't had time to consult with Director of Public Works. This just came in, like I said, 5:37. I did receive another email right before this email from Director of Public Works that the ENS plan with the county has been approved as of close to business today.
Mayor, in addition, December 16th at 2 o'clock, we will be meeting with Mr. Huffman and Mr. Means to, as a follow-up at our last council meeting, to look at the committee and look at what we can do when it comes to planning on Happy Creek. So that is scheduled at 2 o'clock at Town Hall on 16th. Will that be an ad hoc committee? It could be, but it's going to be very informal. There are several people that have some significant input. So. All right, we'll look into that, and if council have, if they have any suggestions, please let me know.
Mr. Hicks, anything I could just add? Or, sorry, Ms. Cockrell, I apologize. I'm just, again, I'm digging into this email really for the first time. Says, he says, "Given the DEQ deadline for this project and the fact that there are exposed areas that need to be stabilized as soon as possible, I believe it's important to move forward with the previously planned work at this time. The town could consider an approach that includes the addition of these larger stones as a follow-up to this project." This would require the development and submittal of a JPA for the necessary permits for the additional work, but would provide time for the development of plan that shows locations and details for the use of the larger rocks. So I'll forward this out to council so you can have it, and I know there's a couple citizens that have requested information like this, too. I'll forward it to them as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Lori, do you have anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll do that next.
Did you have something?
Not on that.
Go ahead and do your recognition. Again, we'll do the.
Well, I did have a, is this under the request and inquiries of council, or are we moving on?
Yes.
Well, no. No, 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 we're not going to.
Okay.
Lori's going to give out the awards for you and me and Mr. Seelock, and so then we'll go back to recognition, because I'm half a failed y'all want to say something.
That's fair.
Yep.
I'm going to stay up here, Lori.
Yes, ah, totally, I'm good. I'm good over here. Is that okay?
Are you, yeah, let me take the first one. Okay. So I just want to say that Councilman Holloway and Councilman Gillespie wish they were here tonight to join us in this. We discussed this for quite a while, and I'm sorry they're not here. So I wanted to speak to Mr. Meza. So Jake, this is for recognition of service, presented to Jacob Almeza for his dedicated service as Planning Commission Member August 2015 to December 2015, and Council Member January 2016 to December 2020. He is recognized as a devoted public servant whose contribution to the progress and future of our community is deeply appreciated. His diligent efforts in the continuity of town government during the COVID-19 pandemic has been invaluable to the town council, town staff, and the citizens of the town of Front Royal. Mayor and Town Council of Town of Front Royal, Virginia, presented this 14th day of December 2020. So.
I would give you both hugs.
I know. Very different.
Thank you. Sorry, Bill.
There you go.
These are really nice.
It is, isn't it?
You guys must have.
I wasn't impressed. Okay, Mr. Seelock, I will still probably be calling you Mr. Seelock, I'm going to try that. So recognition of service presented to William Bill A. Seelock for his dedicated service as Council Member January 2017 to December 2020, and Vice Mayor January 2018 to December 2020. He is recognized as devoted public servant whose contribution to the progress and future of our community is deeply appreciated. His diligent efforts in the continuity of town government during the COVID-19 pandemic has been invaluable to the town council, town staff, and the citizens of the town of Front Royal. So Bill, this is presented today. For the public that's not aware, this is their last meeting with us, right?
Yep.
So, Mr. Tuwalt, Mayor Tuwalt, I should say, I just want to say before I read this. So my experience, I've known Mr. Tuwalt since I was eight years old, and I grew up across the street from him, and when I think of the town of Front Royal, I think it's kind of synonymous with him. I can remember many a snow days when the rest of the kids in the neighborhood were excited about snow, his children were not, because he knew that, they knew that that meant he was going to be out with the crews and pushing snow and things like that. So I know how devoted you were to the town of Front Royal. So recognition of service presented to Eugene R. Tuwalt for close to 20 years of dedication to town government by serving as mayor, vice mayor, council member. And he is also recognized as a devoted public servant whose contribution to the progress and future of our community would be remembered for years to come. His abundance of knowledge and concern for the town citizens and its history will be missed. During the COVID-19 pandemic, his participation in the continuity of town government has been invaluable to the town council, the town staff, and citizens of the town of Front Royal. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys get it? And we have one more that we're going to present, probably not even aware that we were going to do this tonight. So this is recognition and service and appreciation presented to Matthew A. Teedrick for his dedicated service for stepping in as interim mayor, May 2019 to November 2019, and also interim town manager, November 2019 to December 2020. He is recognized and appreciated for his willingness to serve and accept the unexpected during one of the most difficult times in our community. His leadership, guidance, and unconditional support of the town citizen, staff, and council is immeasurable, especially during the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, where he immediately implemented emergency procedures to ensure the continuity of the town's daily operations, making it his greatest priority. Thank you, Mr. Teedrick.
Thank you, Councilor, or Cockrell. Get it right in a minute. I've known her so long, for, eighth, I forget about, she's buried.
You and everybody else.
Okay, now we're open up to the, again, requests of inquiries of council people. Anybody want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for that warm send-off. That's very thoughtful and very nice and much appreciated. You know, it's unfortunate that we aren't able to have more people in this room tonight. I hope that there's an understanding that, you know, there's a desire to have individuals in this room, but unfortunately, with the COVID cases increasing, there's an abundance of a caution that we have this high-bred model of digital and limited capacity in our room. But I'm sure it would have, you know, been nice, especially as Mr. Tuwalt and Mr. Seelock exit, to be able to have that warm send-off as well. So maybe next time, we'll get there, but I do appreciate everybody's understanding, especially since we have a couple council members who are under the weather and are not here tonight. I suspect that this is going to be a little bit of our new norm as we move through the winter and into the spring months. First off, before I comment about council, I did want to just reiterate my comments from our last work session, which was to welcome Mr. Stephen Hicks. He has one week under his belt as we're still rolling in through some difficult times with COVID, but hey, they're rolling out the vaccine, so, you know, hopefully this will be a bad dream, and we'll wake up from it soon. But I have had a chance to see a couple of his emails that he's sent out to our directors and our staff, incredibly professional, soliciting feedback, and ready to jump in the trenches with individuals who keep this town running. And I've been impressed with what I've seen so far, and again, I just wanted to reiterate a warm welcome to you, Mr. Stephen Hicks. And of course, again, just to echo my comments from last week, but thank you again, Mr. Matt Teedrick, for your service. When they read off your recognition, I'm not going to lie, the time has just flown by. It didn't seem that long, but I can't believe that between interim mayor and town manager, it really has been that long. So, you know, thank you for that. Again, difficult times, really appreciate your dedication to this town, and appreciate you serving in that capacity. I did write down a few comments so that I could, you know, stay on track. But I wanted to say, as a father of five children, my perspective of time tends to get measured by the age of my children. So now that my oldest daughter is halfway through her freshman year in high school, I realize that these last six years have just flown by for me. I can't believe that this month finishes my term on town council, and that this is my last meeting as an elected official. I really will miss all of this. I really will, and I'm saying that genuinely. I've had the pleasure of serving on town, I've had the pleasure of serving on the Town of Front Royal Planning Commission, where I received my certification in small-town planning, followed by five years on council. One is an appointed member, and the other is a four-year elected official. I want to thank our community members who gave me a vote of confidence to serve as their representative. I assure you that I gave 110% and never took for granted the trust that was placed in me to advance the best interest of our community. And especially want to thank my family for their unwavering support while I served on council every Monday night, as it was truly a family endeavor. It hasn't been easy navigating through perhaps one of the toughest challenges Warren County has experienced with the EDA scandal and the lack of citizen trust that followed. I think it's going to take a long time to recover from that. But as I reflect on where we are today, I would like to highlight some of our focused accomplishments that leave us in a better place than when we started. We focus on our downtown through our community block grant initiatives, helping to fund facade improvements and enhancing our gazebo area with the new construction of a pavilion for family and our community gatherings. Our downtown continues to thrive with new restaurants and shops opening for business, working together to weather the storm of COVID. We focus on tourism through rebranding initiatives and ushering in the Discover Front Royal tagline. We've created a county-town chamber partnership for tourism initiatives, and we redirected funding to build the strongest digital presence we have ever had as a town. We focused on public safety and built a beautiful new police station with completed funding, and have continued to invest in the needs of our officers through training programs, body cameras, vehicles, and upgraded telecommunications devices. We focused on the reorganization of town leadership, selecting individuals who would place an emphasis on customer service, who'd be willing to remove barriers in conducting business, and find answers for our citizens trying to navigate our local government. We've hired amazing individuals all around, but I am particularly proud of our new planning director and town manager, two key positions that affect our community development, local businesses, and our ability to earn the trust of our citizens that we serve. We focused on expense reduction in our general fund by having the first-ever vote to reduce real estate tax. We modified our health benefits to reduce premium spend, one of our larger expense items, and when COVID hit, we were proactive in planning for a shortfall in revenue by moving all unnecessary purchases to contingency fund. Thus, we ensured that we would live within our means as a town. And perhaps most importantly, we focus on our town employees by creating an annual appraisal process and fully funding Phase Three of our compensation study, increasing wages by hundreds of thousands of dollars in the past three years to keep our pay equitable for the work we are asking of our staff. All of this was offset through expense reductions and not tax hikes. I honestly could go on and on, as there are many noteworthy accomplishments and hard-working individuals that should be recognized, but suffice it to say, I am proud to have had the opportunity to work with this council and town leadership to have achieved so much in what seems like such a short period of time. Thank you, Gary Gillespie, Bill Seelock, Lori Cockrell, Latasha Thompson, Gene Tuwalt, and Chris Holloway, for making this last year one of my best years on council. Thank you, Matt Teedrick, for your selfless contributions, serving as interim mayor and town manager. Thank you to all the town employees for putting up with council and persevering during these challenging times. And thank you to all the individuals who show up Monday nights to share their concerns and advocate for a better Front Royal. The community is fortunate to have so many people who are passionate about our town. I have no doubt that every year, moving forward, will be better than the last. Thank you all for allowing. Royal. It really has been a privilege. And Merry Christmas. Thank you.
What do you say after four years of service? I've missed one meeting in four years, and I called in from Colorado, Denver, that night, visiting my son and grandchildren on Thanksgiving. I'm very proud of that record. I have participated in CDBG, CARES Act. I'm sorry to say the police department, the funding, and the whole nine yards, getting to the bottom of what was actually spent, and it was a long, drawn-out period of time. And I can tell you, we have an asset in BJ. He's very thorough. He asks for receipts. He will not approve anything until he's got a piece of paper in his hand that says the county, or the EDA, or the vendor, or whomever demonstrates the original cost, and I appreciate that. We spent many hours coming to that $8 million for the police department. And for BJ, I'm very thankful. And, and all staff as well, because I've had a good relationship with them, and I really, really have seen some real assets in this establishment of a $50 million budget. And what do you say about Matt Teedrick? He came aboard when we didn't have goals and objectives. And the first conversation he and I had was goals and objectives. We accomplished them. I think you said 90% of them. And that's, that's what a council's supposed to do. That's service to your community. What do I say about Mayor Tewalt? Confident, friend. We've had periods of time where we argue, we fuss a little bit about this or that, but we come to some kind of conclusion. And I'll say the same thing about council. We don't always agree, but we come to some kind of conclusion. And that's what I'll take away from this council for four years. The other thing is, the CARES Act was extremely important to our community for our small businesses, and I was glad to participate in that. Spent a lot of hours there. And what do you say about things we've done for downtown? You know, closing Main Street is a controversial issue every time that we did it. And hopefully moving forward, Mr. Hicks, welcome to that quagmire. We're going to turn it over to you very shortly. But I do have some comments about Happy Creek. I was very adamant in supporting getting some ad hoc committee, and that's underway. The previous speaker failed to mention that I had provided him with that information, that there was an ad hoc committee being formed. And Mr. Means, who came and spoke last week, and he was here again tonight, and he positively shook his head every time I mentioned a fact that he knew about. So, a lot of things are going on that, on the Happy Creek, that the community either misses or doesn't hear. The riprap is important to maintaining the creek. And I still say you can't let this area, if it's a beautiful piece of our town, you can't neglect it for 13 years and expect it to remain beautiful. Change has to come about, and it was neglected. Four years ago, when I took this position as council member, I was approached by many town citizens. I'm not talking about one or two. I'm talking about many that wanted something to do with the flooding situation that we had in the downtown area. And Mr. Mezzo, you, you neglected to mention one other fact that is very important, our I&amp;I program. We didn't want to talk about flooding, but the I&amp;I program, this council took it on to do something about I&amp;I. And that is going to be, save us millions of dollars, because we won't have to change our waste treatment process to, to accept flooding, floodwaters anymore. So, for that, and all these accomplishments that all of us had an interest and effort in, it's appreciated. Thank you for my four years.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Yes, I wanted to take a minute. We all know that I'm not the public speaker. That's Jake's role, so somebody has to fill that one. But I'm going to miss you. I'm council of. When I first came on, you were kind of like a mentor. You'd sit next to me and like, I'd ask you all the questions, and if I messed up, you'd be like, it's okay, I did that before too. And I appreciate that so much. Mr. Tewalt, I always say that you know where every manhole is in Front Royal, and while I think I'm joking, that might be true. So, I really count on your knowledge with all of the water and the works and everything. And I appreciate your service and how welcoming you were when I came to the, to the council. Mr. Seelock, same to you. Very welcoming, very helpful. And I appreciate you leading the charge on finding a new town manager. And I really appreciate that. Matt, thank you for coming and bringing with you, I remember when you first became mayor, such organization to everything. And you sat down and you said, hey, what are your goals? What, what do you want to accomplish? And we worked from there. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate you doing that. And I know it hasn't always been easy. I know that all of us have not agreed on everything. I know I would get emotional, but I believe all of you treated me with respect, even when we did not agree on something. And I appreciate each and every one of you, and I'm going to miss you all.
Lori?
Well, I'll just make it quick. I'll make it brief, but I, I think Latasha said best. I really am going to miss you all. And I've only been doing this since January, and I truly appreciate the vote of confidence you all gave in appointing me. And I feel like I've learned so much from you all, but I feel like I still have a lot left to learn. I, I kind of was thinking tonight, and I'm hoping you might be on call. I have all of your numbers, so be expecting a text every now and then. But I, I really have appreciated working with you all, and I, and I know you'll continue to, to stay involved in our community and, and, and see great things through Front Royal. Matt, I, I know I've shared this with you on our own, but, you know, just the fact, look, I think one of the most important things that I would say about Mr. Teedrick's tenure, especially as town manager, was how many employees approached me and mentioned how, how much they liked the time when you, when you came on board and how important that was to you. And they would say, I really like that Teedrick. And, and I think that's a real true testament to a leader, is when the people that are under you are seeing the benefits. Even when they don't like what we say, sometimes respect is extremely important, and they felt respected by you, and I appreciate that, so.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Lori. Just time to be prepared for the mayor. I had made up my mind. I wasn't going to say a whole lot, but I am going to say a few things here this evening. Firstly, I want to thank my colleagues for serving with me as mayor this year and before the others that, when I was mayor first time. You know, it's been a long time in my years of serving in Front Royal. I've served Front Royal somewhere in the neighborhood of 40-plus years, since I was public works director and all the other hats I'd worn at the time, from engineer to zoning administrator to, to planner and all the other things that I've done over my last tenures. But during my years with the town, I got on the council in 2000, and during that time, I had worked, had worked for at least five managers. Now, I think I've worked with or under, or being the boss of nine managers, I believe. I tried to count them up. I'm not sure. But, but you know, we've had a great time in Front Royal. We've seen a lot of things done. We've seen all the buildings that we have built, a new police department, a new public works area, new electric department, new sewer plants, new water plants, and, and many, many, many other things that we have done over the past 40-some years that I've been a part of. And some of us, I was in charge of, some that I wasn't. I was on the council or the mayor. But I guess one of the biggest things that I can remember in Front Royal is 1985, when we did the, the block grant, and I was in charge of the Main Street project. And my men built the actual gazebo and, and did all the work that was done down on Main Street. And we replaced all the water lines, sewer lines, whatever was in the ground, we replaced. But you know, it comes to mind that how good employees that you had. When we put the top on the gazebo area, and we had built it in our maintenance shop down at, behind the big grocery stadium. Of all the bolts, I think it was 64 bolts that held the top of that on, and all of them hit perfect except one, and we had to re-drill one hole for a half inch. And so, and we had built it in six different pieces, and it all fit together like a glove. So, I'm very proud of that, and as well as the other work that we have done, and I was the engineer on it as well. But, you know, I could go all night talking about buildings and things that we have done. But, but the greatest thing is, I'm, I was here to be able to serve the public. And like I said, I've served the public for probably 40-plus years. I think it's 20 on this plaque, but I believe it's really 16, but that's okay. Because I had 25 here with, as public works director, and I believe 16 with, with the council and being mayor. But, but regardless of whatever it is, I'm really proud of being able to be, and say I'm a citizen of Front Royal, and I was probably proud to be a person who has taken upon himself to serve the public. And I hope the public really, the public really appreciated that during my tenure here. Again, I've served with probably 30 or more people on this council as mayor or councilman in, in other areas. And, and really, I'm proud to say that we've had a good time. We've got a lot of work accomplished. And in, in those years, I'm very proud of everything that we have done. Steve, with you being here announced, I was hoping I could work with you for the next couple of years, but I'll work with you behind the scenes, hopefully, and maybe we can at least play some golf one day, sooner or later, if the weather doesn't get too bad. So, welcome aboard. And Matt, we'll see you later, and I'm sure I'll see you around town.
Thank you.
So with all that said, thanks for everyone here this evening and all the support you've given me, and hopefully that we all can work together in the future on maybe other projects. Thank you. Okay, with all the other things said, let's get into our business for this evening. Next item is proposals and additions or deletions of items to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, under the consent agenda items, I'd like to remove item number 8C, budget amendment for vesta, upgrade project, call radio recording services.
And 10.
And also, I'd like to remove item number 10, public hearing, special permit for Richard Speewack, proposed construction of the single family dwelling on non-conforming lot.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent. Councilman Holloway's absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, we take it off. Two items, item 8C under the consent, and item 10, the public hearing for the special use permit. Next item-
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I wanted to remove number 13. I didn't know if I needed to wait for Mr. Bill to get through his, Mr. Seelock, sorry. Number 13 is the donation for the Chamber of Commerce for $50,000. Yes.
Oh, I got you. We're on the wrong page.
Page two.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I can second that. Are we going to discuss it, or we're going to vote, or?
Yeah, we'll discuss, sure.
No, if you're, if you second it, we're removing it from the agenda altogether.
Right. I mean, we could discuss it, but the vote will be yes or no to remove it. It has to be the, the whole council has to vote yes to remove it.
I won't second it, but when we get to that, we can have discussion and decide from there.
Okay. Is there a second? Third time. Is there a second? For lack of a second, the motion dies. Okay, let's go back to item eight this evening. Counsel approve of consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. No, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking for approval.
No, I'm asking for a, oh.
Motion?
Motion.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the consent agenda items as presented with the additions, or with the deletions post.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to pull anything else off the agenda? Does anybody want to talk about anything on the agenda?
You mean for number eight?
For, for the consent agenda.
Yes, yeah.
With no discussion, can I have a vote call?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent. Councilman Holloway's absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is item number nine, is a public hearing in ordinance to amend Chapter 28 Planning Commission membership first reading. Could you read the summary, please?
The Front Royal Planning Commission's currently established as a seven-member body as set forth under Town Code, Chapter 28. The proposed amendment to this chapter is to reduce the number of planning commissioners from seven to five, and to make other minor amendments to Chapter 28 regarding term of office and removal from office to be consistent with the proposed change in membership, and to mirror applicable, applicable provisions of Section 15.2-2212 of the Code of Virginia. Changing the planning commission to a five-member group would make the membership of the commission consistent with the membership number of both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Architectural Review, which are also five-member public bodies. This proposal was presented in a staff memorandum and discussed with town council at its October 26 work session. It was a consensus of council for staff to proceed with the scheduling of public hearing on this matter by council.
This is a public hearing. I'd like to open with a public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there one in? Anyone in the audience would like to speak this evening? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? This time I'll close our public hearing. I'll turn it over to council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt the proposed amendments to Town Code, Chapter 28 Planning Commission in their entirety and as set forth and presented, in presented ordinance, thereby changing the number of members on the Front Royal Planning Commission from seven to five, and amending other sections of Town Code 28 that coincide with the change accordingly and in conformity with state statutes.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think the summary did a really good job of laying out why we're making the change from seven to five. But I did want to just give a little bit of background information. We've had some dedicated individuals that have served for quite some years on planning commission, which allowed us to keep a body of seven members, which is, which has been absolutely great. But over time, members have dropped off, and it's been increasingly difficult to fill our board positions, in, fill our board positions, planning commission being one of them. And now with one of our, our planning commissioners now joining council, it's even that much more difficult to keep a body of seven. So, council's agreed that it is consistent with all of our other bodies, appointed bodies, that five members would suffice. And so, I, I think this is a good move in reducing the size from seven to five, and hopefully to find some qualified and talented individuals to fill that seat. Additionally, because most people don't know, it's not just filling the seat as an appointed planning commissioner, but we do ask the planning commissioners to be certified in small-town planning as well. So, there is a significant commitment to the planning commission, a little bit differently than some of our other boards as well. And so, again, moving it to five, I think would allow us to find some qualified individuals and hopefully keep them for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent. Councilman Holloway's absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight has been deleted, number 10, so we go to number 11, council approval, COVID-19 minister- COVID-19 municipal utility relief program, FY21 budget amendment and agreement with Warren County. Could you read your summary, please?
Council's requested to approve an FY21 budget amendment to receive $88,109 from Warren County for the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development COVID-19 Municipal Utility Relief Program to allow the town to distribute to eligible town utility accounts according to the program guidelines. Furthermore, council's requested to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with the county of Warren for the use of COVID-19 Municipal Utility Relief Funds from the Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act. Upon completion of the program, staff will return to council to approve an intra-fund budget transfer to distribute the funds accordingly to the corresponding enterprise funds.
Okay, I turn it over to council at this time. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve FY21 budget amendment to receive $88,109,000 from Warren County for the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development COVID-19 Municipal Utility Relief Program to allow the town to distribute to eligible town utility accounts according to the program guidelines. I further move that council authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with the county of Warren for the use of COVID-19 Municipal Utility Relief Funds from the Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act, also known as CARES Act.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I see that BJ has come out of the office because he anticipated the questions. Remind me again, what is our total delinquent accounts? Dollars, I'm sorry.
Dollar delinquent dollars is approximately $545,000.
So $545,000 and I'm distilling this down in simple terms, but basically this is relief funding given to us by the state to offset some of those hardships on paying the utility accounts?
Correct, some of those.
So it's wonderful that we're able to get some funding, $8,000 is really nice, but we're still in the rears by 400-some, $30,000.
That is indeed correct and the funds are limited to those eligible accounts. Eligible accounts have to be 30 days in arrears with priority given to those 60 days in arrears and the accounts will not have been able to receive CARES funding previously. So it has to be new funds. So there are eligibility requirements, but yes, it will help some also.
Any indication that there might be a second round of consideration for funding?
Not at this point unless the federal government extends the CARES guidelines. Right now, everything has to be not totally complete, pretty well complete by December 30th.
And I'm just saying this for again, public record, but the town of Front Royal did not get an exemption to essentially collect on delinquent utility accounts as like Dominion Power did, is that correct? Am I saying that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We did obtain an exemption, but not in the same fashion that Dominion obtained it.
Meaning that we have to continue to let users who are delinquent draw on the utilities and the idea behind this funding is to help offset some of that.
This will help offset some of that. We did have, we did obtain the exemption last Monday, so we can go through the process. There's still a few items we have to check off before we can resume disconnections if we choose to do so.
But up until last Monday, that was not the case.
That is correct.
Okay. So, I mean, don't get me wrong, it's nice to get some funding, it's better than none, but I also didn't want there to be a perception that that is a significant lift for us because we still have quite a bit of delinquent utility accounts.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
BJ, are there certain guidelines that's admissible to people that are delinquent?
Yes, there is a rather long list of guidelines that have to be followed.
I mean, they have to fully understand those guidelines?
Yes, yes.
If they don't meet the guidelines, then they're still responsible for that building.
That is correct. The two major guidelines is that the arrears, not the actual bill, but the arrears that pass due, it has to be 30 to 60 days or over 30 days to even be eligible, over 60 days to receive priority are the two biggest guidelines and receiving no previous CARES funding.
Okay, is that basically unemployment or?
There also has to be a hardship, hardship related to COVID-19. So unemployment, you know, childcare, things like that or maybe a medical condition related to COVID. So there are, there is a list of guidelines and we will be reaching out to our utility account holders that are eligible to assist.
Councilman Meza made an important fact, this is on a partial. If we stick to the numbers that you quoted us, we would still be in a hole significantly.
Yes, you're correct and I do anticipate the figures for December climbing a little bit until we get where we need to be with all the notices and things for the exemption.
Thanks for that clarification.
Anyone else? Do I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent, Councilman Holloway's absent, Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is item 12, council approval, resolution for the town manager to accept deed of easement to behalf of the town for the redundant waterline project on Route 522 North Corridor. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a resolution that authorizes the town manager, town attorney and assistant town attorney to accept and approve on behalf of the town of Front Royal all deeds, deeds of easement and related rights to complete the Route 522 340 redundant waterline project.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice Speaker Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent, Councilman Holloway's absent, Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item denied is item number 13, FY budget amendment, Chamber of Commerce donation. Do I hear a motion? On second thought, let me read the summary, Tina, it's very short.
Council's requested to approve an FY21 budget amendment in the amount of $50,000 and to approve the town donating $50,000 to the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce.
Now, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a fiscal year 21 budget amendment in the amount of $50,000 and approve the town donating $50,000 to the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. It's for, from what I understand, this was put on the agenda by BJ and Matt, so I just have questions for those guys, I guess. So the letter doesn't technically ask for a specific amount of money. Also, the services that they're listed, that they're going to provide are services that are provided freely from the Lord Fairfax Small Business Center and they've received CARES Act money for that. I'm also reading that this will maybe cover fees of them doing the permitting process. I don't see where this is $50,000 worth of services, one. Two, it's duplicates and three, are we expected to provide the chamber with $50,000 every year and where is the money coming from? Sorry, lots of questions. Start wherever you want.
Sorry, you want me to address it? Yes. Okay, good questions. Just to maybe bring in some history, I think we had two or three work sessions where we were trying to determine how we were going to spend the CARES Act Round 2 funding. And if you recall, there was, at the time, there was a lot of discussion about how much money was going to be used for hazard pay, how much money was going to be used for business incentives, how much money was going to be used for the Chamber of Commerce donation. So the $50,000 was carried over in every one of those spreadsheets. And so when the council changed the policy by which we're going to receive the CARES Act funds, where we submitted the law enforcement salaries and we were able to get lump sum checks, the $50,000 is, it's a donation is what it is, an effort to help the chamber stay afloat, but also in talking with the chamber, we had, well, let me back up, BJ and I and staff, we're talking about bringing a small business development person in-house and paying them as a consultant in an effort for business recovery efforts, small business recovery efforts as part of the CARES Act funds. And in talking with procurement, it just made it a lot easier to find a not-for-profit to kind of oversee that individual. You are correct, Lord Fairfax does have that service as well as other jurisdictions, but this person would spend, according to what I've been told, approximately 20 hours a month specifically in Front Royal Warren County to assist small business owners. The special permitting piece, handling the special permits, that's not really, I mean, that's just a value-added service that they volunteered, that they would do for us and you're not, you know, you're not mistaken, there's, there is no quantifiable, you know, there hasn't been any specific dollar amount associated with the service the chamber's going to provide. It was a donation to help with the business recovery efforts as well as to help offset their shortfall. What happens, I think your other question was, what about next year and other? I mean, that's up to future councils to decide. There has been years in the past, I think prior to, well, Gene, you probably would know better than anybody, in years past, council and the county would donate monies to the chamber for various functions. That stopped because it became self-sufficient to some degree and then this year, without the ability for the chamber to generate the revenues that they do, they've come to both the county and the town and asked for donations throughout the year, which we've done and they've also provided the services to administer the first round of the CARES Act. I hope I answered, did I answer all your questions?
I think so, just want to 100% clarify, so the money that we're donating, that $50,000 is coming from the CARES Act funds.
Let me be very technical with that.
Yes.
And BJ, you can correct me if I misspeak, it's coming from the general fund, okay? The CARES Act, the county, the town has received to date approximately $800,000 from the CARES Act Round 2. At the end of this week, we should receive the balance, $300,000 for a total of approximately 1.2 million. Other 1.2 million dollars, there's been monies that have been spent, the employee bonus that you did last meeting, the SCADA systems for the electric and wastewater treatment, you're aware of those items. So there's still a balance of approximately $500,000 in the general fund. So I don't want to mislead by saying the money's coming from CARES Act. It's not because we've already gotten reimbursed, it's technically coming from the general fund whereby the general fund's been increased because of CARES Act funding. I hope that's, BJ, did I?
No, in essence, it's coming from CARES Fund money that has been deposited that we're not going to use.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's all I needed to be able to make a good decision.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, just.
I'm sorry. So I just wanted to clarify, or I think I know the answer, but just to make sure the public knows the answer. So this money doesn't have to be spent by December 31st, whereas, you know, care, some of the CARES Act money had to be spent by then, but this is basically, we've already gotten the reimbursement as she said, so that's one answer. It doesn't have to be spent by December 31st. Two, Tasha asked it, I know we asked it last week, this doesn't tie us, this doesn't tie the council into this budget item as being in the 2022 budget, right? Even though we're, even though we are donating money in this budget, it doesn't necessarily mean that when we get ready to budget for the next year that this will stay as a lot item. I mean, I guess it could be there and we would just decide whether we wanted to take it out or put it in.
You're spot on and if I were, if I were still in an advisory role, what I would suggest to council is, you know, are you getting value for the small business development person? Are you getting good feedback from businesses that, yes, there's value there and is that something the chamber can continue to fund on their own or do you think it's something you want to donate towards? You know, that would be, that'd be a decision to make down the road as far as I'd be concerned, but that's up to new leadership and new council members.
Last question, sorry. Do you know, and now, you know or not, maybe it's a question for Mr. Daly, but do you know if the county is also making a donation to the Chamber of Commerce?
I do not, I do not know, no, ma'am.
And so I know we were, it was requested from us, do you know if it was requested from them as well?
I do not know that, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, last question, I think. So with the money going to the chamber and they're providing these specific business services, is that for all businesses or only those that have partnered with the chamber in forms of membership?
Good question. It's my understanding from the executive director from the chamber that all businesses will be welcome to get, receive the small business development support. And also you asked another, there was another question you asked I didn't answer. I meant to ask your other question. Oh gee whiz, it'll come to me, sorry. I thought there was some, I thought you had two questions and I only answered one, but...
Okay, and then to be clear, technically speaking, we're not voting on the permitting process, but just the donation anyways, the permitting process would be a separate vote and everything. I'm not agreeing to anything in this letter, right or wrong?
I'm sorry.
The bottom part here where they're saying that they're volunteering to handle the permitting process?
Right, that'd be something, yes, ma'am. And that's, they're still, I know what the second, I knew what the second answer was. We can technically disperse that over the next, this budget year how you wish. I think those details can be left with the town manager and the executive director and the nuances of the special permitting, that in and of itself is a significant discussion, in my opinion. It's going to take a lot of time to work out the MOU, the memorandum of understanding for how the special permitting. I know if you do not allow the chamber to take that over, you're going to hear a giant screaming sound, which is Tina Presley, because she was very excited to hear the chamber was going to take that over. But it would, I mean, I think it makes, you know, makes good sense and I appreciate the fact that the chamber board is trying to get more engaged with businesses and trying to be more accommodating to businesses. You know, this pandemic is really, you know, a lot of people look at the glass half-empty. I look at, you know, it's half-full. You know, there's been a lot of positive things that have happened through this process and seeing an organization that is built around small business owners in our community step up the way they have and being willing to, you know, do these special permits and to bring in a small business development person, just creative out of the box thinking. So it's up to council how you want to handle this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
In that one area of the paragraph, I do like the idea that it said create a special committee of chamber staff and volunteers, because I know that's been in one going discussion amongst business owners and events, especially as it relates to Main Street, whether it closed, whether or not it closed. So getting the chamber staff and volunteers to make those decisions, I think is, you know, they're invested in that decision, so you know, they would...
I think that I tend to agree, having, I got to be candid with you, one of the, one of the most challenging parts of this job was Main Street and the closing of it and these events. You know, there's so much passion on both sides of the aisle and a lot of times, having it come from the town manager's office gives this perception of heavy government and bureaucracy, which it doesn't need to be the, I mean, all we're trying to do is have, have good community events for the citizens and tourists, right? And so, but when it's focused inside the government and the government's one dictating, don't get me wrong, there's always going to be the situations when it comes to public works and utilities and services and law enforcement, right? So we're always going to have those government functions to be part of events, but the actual organizing the events and the approval of the events, you know, I think it's a creative way to have an organization that is vested in these type of events, actually overseeing them through a committee, like you said, I think it, I think it's pretty creative personally.
Mr. Higgs, Mr. Teager, council, I just want, sorry, I apologize, one more question. Did I interpret what you just said, was it that that $50,000 doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be a one-time dispersal, like tomorrow we're going to cut a check? Then it's going to be more, once they have a staff member that's going to focus on, you know, small business and recovery? Or yes?
No, I think you're right. So the motion is, is to approve the donating and to shift it from the general fund appropriative funds to an economic development Chamber of Commerce line item. So the motion is to give BJ and the town manager the authority to cut that check at some point. That check can be cut today, it could be cut in February, it could be cut in March, it could be cut in June. The money is allotted, allotted for that line item. The money is allotted, allotted for that line item.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie is absent. Councilman Holloway is absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item denied is item 14, budget transfer to release portions of the contingency funds. Do I hear a motion? No, let's do this. Let's read the summary again first.
Council's requested to approve releasing the amount of $347,761 from FY21 contingency funds previously set aside and approving budget transfers totaling $347,761 to allow implementation of the third-year compensation study and funding for merit raises for town employees. These funds were originally adopted with the FY21 budget and were set aside for contingency in the event the town were to experience revenue shortfalls due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Overall, town revenues are currently tracking near budgeted amounts, and remaining contingency funds will continue to be evaluated monthly.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve releasing the amount of $347,761 from fiscal year 21 contingency funds previously set aside and approving budget transfers totaling $347,761 to allow implementation of the third-year compensation study and funding for merit raises, excuse me, for town employees.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am really excited that my last meeting, we get this over the finish line. This was four years in the making, and I know that our town employees can get frustrated with council plan more than they would ever express, but I'm really proud that when we committed to a compensation study and then committed to the first-year implementation, and the fear was that we were never going to fund year two and year three because past experience has told our employees that when council changes over, that goes bye-bye. I'm really proud that we got three years of funding over the finish line for our town employees who more than deserve it. And I know it's in our contingency funds, I know we had to delay it a little bit longer than anticipated. It's still a little bit of a tenuous time, but we're fully committed to our employees. And so this is probably one of, one of the longer projects that I've had the opportunity to work on, and that I'm most proud to get over the finish line. So congratulations to our employees.
Mr. Mayor.
Also working on this committee, I am extremely proud that we accomplished, this is one of the accomplishments that you don't always realize. And you don't realize what our staff do on a daily basis. I've been privileged to watch and ride on a police vehicle. I've been privileged to be on a garbage truck and watch some of these people in action, and it's well deserved. So I'm glad that we did this. I'm probably not as ecstatic as Mr. Meza, but it's quite an accomplishment for this council. Thank you all.
Anyone else?
Sorry, one more thing. I'll put a plug in. It was a, it was a period of time before we did a compensation study. I'd encourage future councils to have this as a reoccurring, a reoccurring process, whether it's, you know, we finished up three years now, if we look at it every five years or whatever it might be, but don't let this go to the wayside, because what will happen is we'll get so far behind in our pay grades that it'll be almost insurmountable to try to catch up. I mean, if we're talking about one-year term of $347,000, imagine trying to make that up over five years period of time. So this really should be a process that's reoccurring.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie is absent. Councilman Holloway is absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item denied is item number 15, council approve resolution of recognition for service to Nancy LeHue on the BAR.
Yes, I move that council approve a resolution recognizing Nancy R. LeHue for 11 years of service on the Board of Architectural Review.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to Ms. LeHue for volunteering to continue to serve on the bar. We really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie is absent. Councilman Holloway is absent. Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. There being no more business, may adjourn.
Do we need to take the motion to go into close?
No, we have to leave. We do?
Well, I got to need that for...
I think we need to. Let me make sure. Don't... We don't need to go to close. I was so happy. He said we don't have to, he prepared it just in case we needed to.
You were like, I don't need this up.
Maybe they...